Welcome to the Takahoe Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting for the month of January 2025. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, please take the roll.
President.
Present.
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 I am present. First order of business will be the approval of the minutes from December the 11th. Any questions?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December the 11th.
Second.
Thank you. I don't know who was here. Nancy, please poll those that were here.
Okay, Member Coretta.
Prove.
Member Peori.
Prove.
Member Genobi.
Approved.
Member Pira.
Approved. Thank you. 174 Marble Dale Road has withdrawn. We have 137 Columbus Avenue, which is adjourned. And we will start with 173 Marble Dale Road amend special use permit for commercial kitchen. Yeah, I think that's off.
I'll make batteries the way they used to.
Good evening. Louis Campano.
That worked.
Architect on behalf of Broken Bow Brewery LLC. We were here last month where we discussed the scope of the project, a two-phase project, with the first phase being an interior alteration to include a commercial kitchen, extending the bar, and also creating private event space within the confines of the building. Phase two would consist of reconfiguration of the parking, I'm sorry, of the beer garden, which would also add one additional spot back to the parking area. Broken Bow is looking to amend the existing special permit, one of which is the beer garden, the reconfiguration of that. The second would be the special events and food trucks. Previously, they were granted a special permit to have 12 events per year, four of which would be tented. 12 events, meaning 12 events with food trucks. They are seeking to keep or to proceed with those same guidelines, but with the addition of the commercial kitchen. And just to clarify, the food trucks are on a very special occasion basis. They are not on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. That would be their kitchen that would be used for those events. So by specialty, I mean things that they would not have on menu, which would be more along the lines of ice cream, candy, more of like a dessert type of thing, specific to the event that they have there. They're in a unique position because their establishment has become a venue for these things, for town events and private events and also school events. So they just want to maintain or have the right to proceed with that. One of the stipulations was overflow parking for the four tented events. We are going to be working with the neighbor, Rocco, who has, I believe, the parking lot license, and will provide information to the board, I believe, at the next meeting.
Okay, so presently, you said there were 13 spots?
There's 12 currently. We'll be adding one in for 13.
Okay. So the building inspector contacted me yesterday, I believe it was, and he is under the impression there's only five spots. I don't know where he comes up with five. So if you could, have somebody contact Bill Williams and discuss. He said he was going to send some documentation today, but I didn't see it.
Okay.
He said that I haven't.
I haven't heard anything from Bill on that regard, so.
So if you have a tented event, then you'll have no spaces?
I believe the tented events in previous to this application were tents over the beer garden.
Right.
Quite frankly, right?
Right.
So in this case, they would have a pergola, right, over that, but that's a phase two project. So that's not going to happen, say, in this year. So they want to maintain the right to have that, to have that right until they have that pergola in place. So that's why I think some of the confusion that stemmed from.
No, I'm confused. So once the pergola is up, they're not going to have any more tented events?
Well, there's no reason to have a tent if you have a pergola.
Yeah, but the pergola only covers a small portion of that parking lot, right?
It would go over the reconfigured beer garden. It's automated, yes. They have automated fins, so in inclement weather, it would close.
Maybe if you put the pictures up. I thought the proposal was for the pergola to only cover a portion of the parking lot, not the entire.
The pergola only covers the beer garden.
The beer garden, right. Not the parking lot, right. Thank you. Sorry to put you through all this work.
So here's the site plan showing the proposed conditions. This darker hatched area is the footprint of the existing building. This dashed line right here is the footprint of the existing beer garden. This lighter hatched area is the footprint of the future beer garden.
Thank you. Good. So if you were to have a tented event, would it cover the beer garden as well or just from the end of the beer garden to the end of the parking lot?
So, I mean, the tented event, I mean, this is, they would put the tent over.
Over, right. Okay. And then you would eliminate the, all of the parking spaces for that tented event?
No. The point is that the tent would not affect parking spaces.
He's only using a tent till they build, they're only going to use the tent till they build the pergola. When they reconfigure the beer garden, then they'll build the pergola.
Could that be?
They're not tenting any. They're not going to need to tent one.
Why don't you just tell them what the size of the tent's going to be then? So they don't have to worry about what size the tent's going to be. Because they're thinking you might, who knows if you make it bigger, smaller.
So it's 40 foot six by 23 four.
In the amendments, the special use permit, it does not clearly indicate that the use of the tent is going to be temporary until the pergola is erected? Could we clarify that? Okay.
Okay, good.
Can you describe the pergola?
Sure. So as part of the initial, the initial application, I had submitted documentation of, I'm sorry, of the pergola and specifications. So basically, the pergola is an automated system, right? So it lands on a series of columns, as you can see here in the photographs, and there's internal structure. And the fins, which we would all know as pergola rafters, right, they would automatically, in inclement weather, turn. It has an internal gutter system that would take the water off of the system down through one of the columns into a cul-de-sac, which would be beneath the parking area. It has lighting, it has fan, fans, I should say, and heating. No. Nope. Three sides are open. They will remain open. And only the roof is automated to close if it's raining. I believe Chow's Restaurant had just recently installed one of these systems on their upper terrace. They're fully enclosed, that's, yeah. This is just for some protection. Instead of umbrellas, you have.
So all the, any events they have will just be under that pergola? So say if you have a chili cook-off again next, this year, say, October, they'd like, they normally didn't have it last year. They will have like five small tents. The police department was there, DPW, you know, everybody else was there. So everything would be under there? No, it was in the park, it was in the park, yeah.
That I'll have to talk to them. They're not here tonight. I think they had a family group to see. Something Lyle can speak to.
Yeah, something, something like that. They use the whole parking lot for that whole thing.
That would be clarified.
Questions?
Just one question, slightly unrelated. How many parking spaces are they currently required to have under the existing special use permit? I saw a reference to parking spaces in the 2012 minutes, but I haven't seen anything in the subsequent materials and just wanted clarity on the number they're required to have currently.
I didn't see anything in the 2017 approval. That's what I was looking at specifically, because the most recent one, but.
Yeah, the older one said 16 spaces, which we know does not exist in, yeah.
I can look into it, but off my memory, I think it's 14.
Okay.
They gave two up when they got the outside. I'd have to, I can find out.
Yes, and then in 2017, part of the application was to expand the beer garden, which took over an additional two. That's, so it went from 14 to 12.
The original, I know, I know for sure the original was 16, before they even started touching outside. So it went from 16 to 14. If there's another one, then I have to.
I think there's another resolution that we have to get to, the interim.
Okay.
Where they expanded outside the beer garden, and that's that is the spot.
Okay, thank you.
So for my own clarification, I guess, Gary, when we grant the special use permit, in this case in particular, and the owner were to sell to someone else, does the special use transfer to the new owner?
It does not. We had in that last resolution that the special permit ended with either a sale of the business or if they closed the business, then it's over.
Thank you. Because I can say from my experience with Broken Bow that they've been very good neighbors and they have abided by the rules set forth in the original special use permit. I believe they only had one tented event over the, all the years they've been there, and I have no reason to believe that they would abuse anything. But my concern would be, yes, if they were to sell, so it does not transfer. Good. I have no other questions. Anyone else? Nope. Louis, any questions of us?
I think I'm clear on what the clarifications need to be for the next, for next one.
Oh, yes, and as discussed in the work session, let's clarify the outdoor music. Not indoor music, but the outdoor music. Okay, excellent. And then you will contact Bill Williams regarding this, something with parking. I don't know what it is.
I'm not sure what he's referring to.
So you're, so could you have all 12 trucks at one event?
I don't think they would do that, but. Yeah, I think, I think they're controlled by the number of events.
Correct. The permit speaks to events, not trucks. So could be.
The amount of times you can have a food, a food truck or food trucks.
The amount of time. In the event, for the event, it's, it says.
12, but four tented.
Four tented and, yes, eight additional.
And if they fit on property.
You can't put them in the street.
Well, we could have 13, I guess.
Matter of physics. Just one note, though, for the amendment to the special use permit. The point on food trucks speaks to eight times a year. I know we've been talking about 12, kind of adding the eight times plus the four tented events. You might want to just clarify that, so there's no opaqueness in the future if it ever comes up.
Eight with food trucks, four events.
And it was in the original, and I'm sure we will repeat it for this special use permit, that when you have a tented event, it must be cleared through the building and fire department to make sure, you know, for safety reasons, not, you just can't throw it up and. Okay, excellent. That's it. Thank you. Good evening. I will make a motion to open the public hearing regarding 173 Marble Dale Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public who would like to comment? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to leave the public hearing open. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Last but not least, we have 113 Harrison Street seeking an area variance for finished attic space and convert gar, garage for an office.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Stephen Accinelli from Venerusso Curdo, Schwartz &amp; Curdo, representing the applicant Alex and Toni Hall in connection with 113 Harrison Street. Here with me this evening is Tom Currow. He's the architect for the project. Also, Alex is here as well. Unfortunately, Toni is out of town for work, so she apologized to the board for not being here. She very much wanted to be here. And we're here tonight in connection with proposed targeted alterations to an existing single-family house owned and occupied by the applicants. The, the work is related to finishing up the basement and also converting the existing attic space to a third-floor master bedroom. There are currently three bedrooms on the second floor, and with desire to increase living space, especially with people working from home, the applicants would like to convert the third floor to a master bedroom, and the second floor would remain with the three bedrooms. In addition, the applicant is seeking to convert the existing garage to a home office space in part, and also in part, storage space as well. No, there would be no, there would be a powder room only in the, in the garage. There would be no shower or bath in the garage. There was no intention here to make that any type of living space, no kitchen, et cetera. With the board's permission, I'd like to turn it over to the architect, who can walk the board through the physical characteristics of the proposed work.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tom Currow, the architect. Would you like me to just speak about the project, like? Oh, okay. Sorry. So the existing house, it's a one-family home in a two-family zone. It's on a corner lot facing, what we're looking at here is the view of the home from Harrison Street. The adjacent street is a terraced place. The owner's been, the new owner's here, they've been there for a while, but they really upgraded this home from what it was many years ago. It's rehans, enhanced the facade, new roofing. The site is very well-maintained. But their family's growing and they need more space, so there is an existing usable attic. It appears to be habitable. And so the idea came about to increase the headroom at the perimeter by raising the roof on Harrison Street and on the opposite side. So what happens is, we dormer both sides and we, we actually vertically enlarge the, the home without increasing the footprint. So I can go right to what we have now, the existing elevations. You can see it's two stories with a very large roof with full windows. I don't believe there's ever any change to those windows. There's also a full staircase from the second floor to the attic. And from the looks of it, it appears to have been built at the time the house was constructed. So it seemed like a good opportunity to consider enlarging the third, or the attic, into a full third floor and create a full master bedroom suite, big walk-in closet, and a master bathroom. And we would be enhancing this stair, because currently it's a little under code. So we're going to be bringing it up to code from the second floor to third floor.
For my own edification, what is code for a staircase?
Well, you need three foot minimum, six foot eight headroom. This is like a winder. They don't allow those anymore. All right, so the final, sorry, I didn't have a rendering, but the final product is that the facade goes straight up. This, we maintain the roof line, so you get a glimpse of, to the existing. We didn't, didn't want to decrease the, the look of the existing house, but just vertically extend the facade and have a full eight-foot headroom on the third floor. So the, the work really exists on the rear reelevation and its opposite side. And so you could see from the left side, the dormers almost in a butterfly fashion enlarged over, over the each facade. And these windows would be compliant with emergency escape and rescue, comply with building code. And then the other part of the job, which is not part of this variance, would be the basement, upgrading the basement floor plan to enclose the boiler room, adding, adding finishes. That already has a door directly to the outside, so the egress is fine there. New laundry room, that, this is the existing. So it'd be a new laundry room, enclosing the boiler room, and just a general recreation room. And then the other part of the variance has to do with the accessory garage, which is currently not really being used as a garage, just mostly for storage. The, the owner would like to use this area as a home occupation space. And in doing so, would, we would implement a small powder room, no shower, no, no bathing, and a little bit of storage area. And we most likely would keep the look of the garage on the exterior, so it doesn't look like an office. It would still look like a garage on the outside.
So that's a one-story garage?
Yes. Yeah, sure. Yes. No, no. We're just putting a shed roof on each side. Yeah. Raising the eaves of the low part of the roof, so it's now a gable. Correct. But we're keeping the slope of the existing outline of the roof, just, again, just to maintain the architecture of the existing house. Any questions?
Yeah, just on the third floor?
Yeah.
Master bedroom? So there's no, there's no plumbing up there at all?
Oh, no, on the third floor?
Yeah.
There's no existing plumbing.
There's nothing. So it'd be, everything'd be brand-new up there?
Correct, yeah.
You'll tap it, but to the bathroom right downstairs?
Yeah, there is a bathroom directly below it, two bathrooms, actually. So we should have no problem finding a tie-in.
And you, you pointed out there is no outdoor access or egress to the third floor. You'd, you have to go through the, the one-family home to get to the third floor. There's no way of getting to the third floor from the outside?
From the outside, no.
No, right now, no. You'd have to utilize the emergency escape and rescue window.
Good. And just, you know, maybe for the public's edification, as you stated, you're simply, you know, raising those parts of the roof, the dormers, whatever they're called, but you're not raising the peak of the house itself.
That's correct.
So while technically, it goes from two and a half to three stories, you know, it's the same footprint, it's the same height?
That's correct. The reason the floor area increases is because, you know, technically under five feet doesn't count as floor area, so. The, even though the footprint's staying the same, the floor area increased. And because the garage is now being used, it's counting as floor area, 318 square feet.
Right, and you're going from the district calls for a .54, you're going to .58.
.58, that's correct.
So it's, it's not significant.
Not significant.
In my opinion.
Mine either. Yep.
Use the mic.
No.
Can you give me that?
Yep.
There you go.
Can you just explain to me?
Talk into the mic, please.
Can you please explain to me, in the zoning analysis section on the first page of the rendition that you gave us? It says that the principal building, under the principal building information, it says that the building height, the existing building height is 17.83 to the principal E. And the permitted amount.
Well, there's no.
It's going from two and a half to two and a half to three. But it's going from the principal E, you're height, you're raising the height to 28. Oh, I didn't realize this wasn't attached to something over there. Okay, so, um, under, in your rendition, under principal building information.
Yes.
The building height, where it requires a variance, it goes from two and a half to two and a half to three, okay, under the stories.
Correct.
Okay? And the height to the principal E in feet goes from 17.83 to 28, which is.
That's, that's correct, because the principal.
So you're not raising the roof, how is it?
No, we're not raising the ridge of the roof. But the eaves run well below the windows of the second floor, so that it's very low for a two-story house. Those are remaining as they are. We're just increasing the height of the new eaves, okay?
Oh, I see that, okay. I see that, okay. Right, it was the, the stories section there and the height to the principal E that I was questioning. Okay, I understand.
It's probably going to be just below the neighbor's E. You know, when you look at the, the yellow house next to it. We're not really going up above that, I don't think. If you understand, basically what he's doing is he's.
If you understand, basically what he's doing is he's, he's flaring out his box.
Yes, I, I know, I actually had a house that...
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
Just on the garage, can you just talk about the need for the professional use there, and...
Yeah.
The rationale behind needing the bathroom in addition to the livable office space?
Well, Mrs. Howe, uh, is a professor at NYU, and she, uh, she's a professor, and, and she has two young children. So just have a place where there's quiet and a little bit of ice, you know, separation just during the working hours, that's what she desires, you know? So it would be good to have a place where there's a bathroom, so she doesn't have to run back and forth into the house. So we, we added the powder room.
Yeah, I want to clarify, it's not a full bathroom, it's a powder room.
Correct, two fixtures.
Right.
Toilet and sink.
How many bathrooms are currently in the house? I think it was three, correct?
Right.
Two and a half, okay.
Can you just clarify in the site plan how many parking spots there are in the, in the driveway? Just to make clear that you do have the two spots independent of the garage.
Well, we, we, we could get two in tandem without even going past the, the front of the house. You could also get two in the rear yard on this concrete pad. Uh, so potentially, you could have four spaces there, but I, I don't think they, they would park more than one.
No, that's perfect, we just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay.
That's a question for the building department I have. You can park behind your house?
Yes, you can use the side of the house, the back of the house, you just can't use the front.
Okay.
So from the structure to the street.
Thank you.
I mean, you might want to, it, she clarified that, I mean, it's up, I would prefer if maybe, it's up to the board, though, if you want to just maybe show the two parking spaces at some point, so we show that you do comply. I think it's a suggestion, this way we don't have to... Yeah, you can show the parking.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As you know, the, uh, routine will be, we'll open the public hearing on this, we'll leave it open until our next meeting, at which time, if there's no changes or objections, we'll be able to make a decision, and then you can proceed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Just for the record, so...
Wait, wait, I'm gonna give you the mic.
I'm sorry, so just, just for the record, make sure, so the only, the only request of the board right now was a, a plan amendment to show the two parking spaces on this, on the property, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody? Yep. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing for, excuse me, uh, 13 Harrison Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no one from the public, I will make a motion to leave the public hearing open until our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no other business, I'll make a motion to close this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Tuckahoe.
Aye. Aye.